Special meeting for April nineteenth at eleven o'clock is called to order with all members present. Do we have a council member Patterson here? Okay, yes, we do. All members are present. I'm going to ask Mr. Christopher Beck to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Gladly. Can we all stand, please? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any communications from the public?
We have one speaker.
Okay, go ahead.
And I need to call him one sec. Good. All right, you ready? Ready? Can you?
I'm ready to give comment.
Council, can you hear our speaker?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt. We have Matt Sorrow.
Hi, my name's Matt Sorrow. I'm the resident of Hawthorne, and I'm calling today to request that you all help address our homelessness crisis and convert the house Hawthorne Mall into public housing. I know a lot of council people keep saying, "We don't own the mall." Well, we're calling on you to use eminent domain. We're in the middle of a crisis, and it is completely appropriate for our government to be using its powers, the fullness of its powers, to address this crisis. You know, we used eminent domain in Inglewood for a sports stadium, okay? I think housing, our brothers and sisters on the street, is more important than a sports stadium. So I think, you know, you have, the city has in good faith tried to work with the developers and owners of the Hawthorne Mall. It's been thirty years. Nothing has happened. This mall is dragging down our city. We have a beautiful opportunity to do something special in our city to start addressing this crisis in a humanitarian way, giving people the rights they deserve, the right to housing, the right to electricity, the right to a shower, right to internet. We can do all of those things in Hawthorne. You know, Biden is passing that big infrastructure bill that has money in it for housing. The state is trying its best to address this housing process. I just can't imagine, you know, our government not wanting to get on board with this, not wanting to solve this problem. It is so obvious. This is such a good place to do it. I don't understand why we have to keep having these conversations, but to actually do something positive for our city. Private seattle housing, it doesn't help the people living in Hawthorne. Big offices, you know, for Google and for Tesla and for SpaceX, you know, that's not going to help the people in Hawthorne either. What we need is getting people off the streets. We need housing that is controlled by the community, not a for-profit model that has gotten us into this mess. I mean, we keep doing the same thing over and over again. We keep doing this for-profit, offer-driven housing, and more and more people keep getting up on the street. Housing prices keep going up and up. People are struggling. I mean, I don't need to tell you this. Talk to your constituents. They know that rent is hard to pay right now. Rent keeps going up higher. It's gone up sixty percent in my building in the last five years in Hawthorne. I mean, that's crazy. We need to start doing things that are going to help the people, and we can start by converting the Hawthorne Mall into public housing. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Anything further from anybody else, Dan?
No, that's all. We just had one speaker.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'll give the floor to Mr. Christopher Beck. Go ahead. Mr. Beck?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Protem, and to council members as well. Thank you again for the opportunity. Just want to give a quick update on what's transpired and then obviously turn the floor over to the owners of the Hawthorne Mall. I would like to say that we did have a very productive meeting last week. I believe it was last Thursday, where the participants and owner of the Hawthorne Mall and myself had a very productive working session. It was at a very high level, mainly introductory in terms of my role and in my position as it relates to the consulting aspect of the city retaining needed to assist, and was really productive in terms of some high-level moving to the next steps. I found that both their team and their council were receptive to what was discussed, and I'm hopeful that after that meeting, we can now work together in establishing a not only phenomenal project that is impactful to the constituents in the city of Hawthorne, but also something that we can all do so in an expeditious manner. I'll go on to say, in that, I believe they, being the owners of the mall, have put together a presentation that I believe they would like to present to us, in addition to a few other recommendations that we had discussed during our meeting, or requests, I should say, for next steps. I think that one of the major things I got out of our working session was that they would like to work with us and were happy that, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I felt that they were happy that someone like myself, who's been in the industry for two-plus decades in representing your city and interests, I think was pleasantly accepted by them. And again, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I found it to be a productive first session.
Okay, go ahead. Charles Company, are you ready, Charles Company?
Yeah, this is Paul Rohr. I'm with Loeb and Loeb, representing the Charles Company. I think we have a, we have a PowerPoint that we'd like to bring up, and I'm not sure who's doing that. Either Eric or Elizabeth on our team.
Paul, real quick, while they're doing that, Paul, was my synopsis of our meeting fair? What I said, is that, am I out of bounds on saying what I said? Or would you prefer that you guys feel that, you know, that that was a productive session and whatnot?
Yeah, no, no. Yes, I would like to start out by saying, one, we appreciate the time the council gave us the last time. We thought that was productive, and we thought having a chance to speak with Chris was also really highly productive, and it helped us drill in on what we want to talk about today. And I think a little bit, you know, I'll get into the introductions, right? But I think a big thing that's come out of it is we want to talk about process, because I think we're, I feel like the worlds are aligning, which is great, and now we have to figure out, what do we do with this alignment? As a practical matter, what are our steps? What do we need to accomplish? And how do we get there? So let's go to the first slide, please, and the second slide. So, yeah, obviously, there's the follow-up to our last discussion and also our ongoing discussions with Chris. I mean, we just talked to him again this morning, and he's been, I would say, a valued partner, and hopefully, we're going to feel that way, you know, on both sides about a lot of people. And we've had people on staff that, you know, we've already had, you know, good relationships with. So first off, I would like to introduce Sarah Withers. She's our boss, so I have to make her go first. She's the development manager for the owner. She works for XL Properties, which is the management wing for the device. I'm Paul Rohr. I'm a partner at Loeb and Loeb, and my partner Elizabeth Camacho is here. She, Elizabeth's going to dig in on sort of the planning issues with you after I give sort of an update of where I think we are and what I think we can do. Let's go to the next slide if we can. So this is what we think we heard the first time, right? I think it's always good to listen. And you guys said, you know, the council said a bunch of different things, and I think Chris drilled in on some of those things when he spoke with us, right? He's there to tell us what you guys think, and I think what we heard is, is that, you know, there's, you would like, I think Chris's words, a smorgasbord, right? That we would like to have an ability to go after various options, and those options here, we think, are things are like research and development, aerospace, flex uses, digital streaming, e-commerce, studio, maybe some sort of other, you know, sort of commercial-type usage, but not necessarily like hardcore, old-school office, which isn't really happening right now, or a lot of retail is not really happening. But we would have neighborhood commercial, neighborhood retail, but that's something that we heard you wanted. We heard that you didn't want all housing, but you, I think, you know, there's been housing discussed before, and you were comfortable with the housing components, just not all housing. We also heard that it's important to engage with and activate Hawthorne Boulevard, right? Hawthorne's a little sleepy there. It's a hard thing to activate, right? Because there's a lot of vacant retail, so we don't just want to do more vacant retail. We need to do something that sparks it, right? And that also, there's the incorporation of open public space, and that may be part of that activation. We don't know yet, right? But that's what we heard from you and what we're saying back as we heard. So let's go to the next slide. So let's just go back for just a moment on sort of what our challenges are. So our owner bought a debunked mall out of bankruptcy, from, you know, bankrupt people who owned it in, or not out of bankruptcy, out of foreclosure, like twenty-one years ago. So we got a mall, city doesn't like it, you know, frankly, the owner doesn't like it because they're not making a lot of money out there, right? It's a big asset that isn't returning. And I know you guys don't like it because it's a huge parcel in the center of your town. So I think, you know, we're all united in wanting to change it. Now, when we think about stuff, and we think about really transformative-type changes, we need an end user, right? Whether that end user is a purchaser of the property or is a tenant in the property, right? We need to do this sort of large-scale thing with an end user, not just in mind, but in hand. So the existing zoning regulations, right, constrain some of our options. I think that there was good work done in two thousand sixteen, right? We're not trashing it, but two thousand sixteen, a year ago seems like a lifetime ago to me. And, you know, that was a lifetime ago in terms of planning, right? So things that we would have liked then, you know, like your office and retail, and, you know, maybe he's not looking that great right now. Hotels are selling at like fifty cents on the dollar, right? No one's going to build one. So we need to get those entitlements. We want to get them in place, so then we can secure the end user and bring them in there. Now, and one thing that I want to get clarity on, and that goes to like the guy who called a moment ago, right? There's this idea of like, well, why doesn't the city just do it themselves? Well, you really can't, right? And we can go to the next slide, but there's no, there's no way for the city to condemn it now, you know, under current California law. Very difficult, and it'd be a lot of money, so you're not going it alone. But this brings us to the next slide. We can't go it alone either, right? So this is my favorite title. It takes two to win, but only one to lose. So here, we have no choice but win-win. Right? We're both strongly motivated. Everyone wants to get this done. The problem is, each of us has a blocking position, right? We can't do it without you, and you can't do it without us, and that's been a problem. But I think we're shaking things up. You guys are shaking things up, and I don't know that that's going to be a continued problem. So what we want to do is come up with a pathway, with a scheme, you know, a process by which we can get everyone's ideas, you know, pushed into this funnel and come out and arrive at a goal, our goal, what we want to arrive with, is a planning vision supported by a legal framework, and hopefully saying that we can drop that end user right into, so that we can keep this moving very rapidly. So now, I'd like to turn it over to Elizabeth Camacho, my partner, who is frankly better at the technical aspects of of planning and land use law, and I'd like her to run through what we think this course might be.
Thanks, Paul. Good morning, council. Thank you again for your time today. As Paul said, I'm going to kind of take us through just a little bit of the structure of the code so that we can better understand the challenge that's before us. So if you'll just bear with me for a moment, this is the basic hierarchy of planning documents, which I'm sure is very familiar to you. But I think it's helpful for us all to remind ourselves of it because it is useful in seeing how these pieces fit together. So of course, at the top of the hierarchy, we have the general plan, then we've got the downtown and Hawthorne specific plan, and then the zoning code. And with respect to the general plan, what the general plan does here for the mall is basically defers everything to the specific plan. So instead of putting a, you know, land use designation and some basic development standards, it refers to specific plan mixed commercial and specific plan commercial, and it does not have any development standards or corresponding zones that's provided in the specific plan itself. In the specific plan, of course, the land use designations for the mall are mixed use and commercial, and the mixed use is then implemented by the mixed commercial zoning district, just to sort of confuse us with lots of different terms. And you can see the hatching here on the model that shows that this is also a transformative project, of course, as identified in the specific plan. And then we get to the real meat, which is the zoning code. And this is where the actual standards live, but of course, they are required by the specific plan itself and then by the general plan because of the structure that we just went through. So what we have here is a zoning, a list of zoning uses and development standards that really are intended to provide for the integration of residential and commercial uses. So the permitted uses are really pretty narrowly defined. They're very traditional. They are things like hotel and office, financial services, retail service uses, and housing. And, you know, of course, there's nothing wrong with any of those uses, but they're very traditional and they're very limited. And the zoning code states that if something, if a use is not expressly permitted, it is prohibited. So we need to have the zoning authorize any uses that we really might be wanting to consider or to include in a project. And the development standards that are in the zoning designation of mixed commercial are also very focused on a mixed-use development, meaning residential and commercial, and the development standards are very targeted to that kind of use only. So again, what are the limitations of the existing zoning for the mall site? It really doesn't provide us the flexibility that we need in order to be able to attract, and as Paul says, as Paul says, to to really have in hand a twenty-first-century tenant and end user. You know, the world is changing. It's changed, and it's continuing to change, and the types of uses are not the traditional uses that we've always seen. And here, we've got really a focus on retail and service uses, and even what we call flex uses, and this is something that's discussed, you know, in concept in the specific plan, but when you get down to the actual zoning authorization, it really is not much more than office. Again, the general, the design standards are geared towards residential, retail, and in order to really be able to have productive conversations, and certainly to bring on board a development partner and user, we really are going to have to have authorization that will expressly permit the broader range of uses that we need. So what is the challenge before us? I think that, you know, obviously, there is work that's required in order to be able to make these changes, and it takes time because it's an entitlement process. But in part because what we need here are legislative changes to the specific plan, the zoning code, and potentially even the general plan. This is a big lift. And one of the things that I think we really want to stress today is that we need to get started on this right away because we think that if we work together and, you know, put our talents together and focus our efforts, we can come up with a fairly efficient plan for making the changes that are needed to get where we all want to be. But if we put this off and we wait for, you know, a potential user, or we wait for too many discussions, we are going to have delay, and we're going to come to a point where maybe we all have a good idea, and we haven't started the long process that's going to be required to make these changes, and we could be looking at a delay of two to three years. And we all know what happens when you've got a delay and a tenant or an end user. You know, nobody wants to wait around for that long process. So what specifically is required in order to make these changes? Again, because the zoning is the specific piece that has the standards, the mixed commercial designation, there needs to be an amendment to the zoning code. There is also a need to amend the specific plan itself because the specific plan and the code provide that amendments that make changes to permitted or prohibited uses require an amendment to the specific plan. And then there's also always the possibility that we need to have some minor tweak in the general plan just to conform because state law requires that we have conformance and conformity between the general plan, the specific plan, and the zoning. So that's always a possibility. And again, these are legislative approvals, so as you know, they go to your planning commission for a recommendation, public hearing, then they come to the city council for a review and approval, and all of this will require review under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. So with respect to SEQA, again, looking for the most efficient path here. As we all know, SEQA can be a big, long part of any entitlement process. But here, our hope is that we might have the tool of the addendum to the downtown Hawthorne specific plan environmental impact report, which you have already certified, as an efficient path to provide for SEQA review. So addendums are a tool that can be used when you've got basically changes in a project, but those changes don't result in new or substantially more severe environmental effects. And so it tears off of the prior EIR. And the EIR here for the downtown Hawthorne specific plan studied, you know, a potential project for the Hawthorne Mall site. So this project, you know, is not specifically authorized, but, you know, in order to have something to study, there was sort of a program that was put together, and it envisioned the demolition of the mall and the relocation of the office that's there off-site. And then this is the program that was envisioned as the net gain, right? So six hundred and eight residential uses, a hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet of retail below residential, twenty-three, two hundred and thirty thousand square feet of quote-unquote flex space retail uses. Again, this is, you know, really just retail, and four hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of flex space. Again, all that's authorized in the zoning code is office, but, you know, this was sort of what was envisioned here in the EIR. So these uses were studied, their impacts were studied from a traffic perspective, air quality perspective, and other categories under SEQA, and there were conclusions that were made in the EIR. And if we can come up with modifications that remain within this envelope of impacts, so they don't have to be the same types of things, but maybe the traffic is, you know, the same or less, then we would be able to use the addendum as a SEQA tool. And that, of course, allows us greater efficiencies and allows us to save time in the entitlement process. Okay. So what is our work program that we have to create this mutually beneficial opportunity that we're all pursuing? Our task is to expand the permitted uses to allow this wide array, this smorgasbord of use and development options, and also to create a structure, which is, you know, if not a project, a way that we can rapidly implement this plan so that we don't have to spend a lot more time in entitlements once we actually have the end user. Again, we want to be able to, whoops, sorry. We want to be able to explore the ability to remain within the EIR envelope and use the addendum. And we have to go to planning commission and city council. So what are our next steps? Our thought is that if we have a working group that is sort of a lean group of people that can really sort of focus in, identify all the technical pieces that we need, and make sure that we've got the right team in place and working efficiently, that we will be most successful in this relatively optimistic timeline that we have before you here. So our hope would be that this month, we might be able to establish that working group, perhaps it's an ad hoc group with, you know, all the relevant staff, community development manager, a couple council members, and whatever technical support we need there. And that working group would get together and outline the program. May to June is the timeline that we are envisioning now for that. We would be simultaneously engaging the necessary consultants and having them commence on the studies that would be needed to show that we are within the existing EIR. Then we would draft the technical changes and amendment language, and this would take us to the summer. And then we would finalize our studies, prepare the SEQA document, which again, we would hope would be an addendum, but we'd have to see late summer, and go into public hearings in the fall.
Okay. Do we have anybody else after you? Ms. Camacho? Do we have anybody else on your end that's going to pick up?
I think, Paul, did you want to wrap up?
Yeah, I could just wrap up if you'd like, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we thank you for your time on that. We just wanted to get this in front of you, and we hope it was informative. And Elizabeth, and Sarah and I are all available if you have questions.
Okay, so I'd just like to put this out there to my council colleagues. It's your desire. Do we take this, would you guys like to take this information, ask questions now, or take this information and just have Mr. Beck interact with the Charles Company on a second round of discussions between them, or would you guys like to discuss this now?
To the chair.
Who does she have a question or two? Councilwoman English, and then council member Patterson. Go ahead. Councilwoman.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Charles Company, for the presentation. I'd like to ask a question to the gentleman that started first on the presentation. There was a comment that was made with regards to hotels and something about, you know, fifty-some cents per square footage, and that right now hotels are not working. Is that, is that something that, in the Charles Company, your opinion, sir, that you're, that obviously the market is not viable for something like this, or is it something that just, you know, speaks to not interested in hotel?
Well, so, thank you. Councilman English.
Oh, did you want to reply, Sarah, or should I?
I think it might be good in regards to the leasing component. You know, right now, council member, it's very challenging. And hotels, we have numerous sites that, you know, we have pitched, and right now, all hotel construction is been put on hold. And I think they're kind of on a wait and see to see how the economy is turning around. Because, you know, with COVID, it's really turned that industry on its head. So that's where we're at. If we could build it and we got a user, we would, obviously, we look at it. That's not out of the question.
But in short, but in short, you're saying no to hotels. The reason I'm asking is because there are, there are developments happening where hotels are involved in our city and obviously across over in Inglewood. So I'm just curious. And then the other question I have is for the, the young lady that spoke with regards to the Hawthorne specific plan and some of the, the requirements that the Charles company is looking at. I have a question with regards to the 608 units where you indicated 300 for senior housing and another 300 for market rate housing. Why senior housing? Why not, you know, a mix of that 300 for other types of housing? Moreover, requirements?
Sure, council member, let me just clarify. I may have been unclear, but this, this is not a proposal that we're making. This is what was studied in the EIR. And so I don't know exactly why that was chosen. Sometimes the approach in the EAR is just to kind of, you know, envision, you know, something that seems, you know, within the realm of possibility to, to give more specifics, to inform the studies that are needed, traffic studies and whatnot. So that is what was studied in the EIR. That, that mix of housing and that number of units. And that is, again, the basis for the impacts that were studied and analyzed in the EIR.
And going back, and going back to the gentleman again with the presentation at the very beginning, Charles Company, sir. If, if that's a requirement, is the Charles Company open to other, other than just seeing?
And and again, if I might, before, before Paul responds to that, council member, I, I wanted to say that this is not required. That it's a little bit confusing because the EIR studied specific uses, but those uses are not required. You know, the, the, the specific plan and zoning code are authorizing. So you can choose from the uses that are authorized there. The EIR just made certain assumptions. But it's not a requirement that those specific uses, you know, be part of a project. I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's fine. I, I would add a couple of things. First off, on the hotel issue, I just want to say that about a year ago, Elizabeth and I got a hotel entitled for the Charles Company in Beverly Hills. After several years of work, I think people who, you know, are in the planning space know how hard that is to get done. It was like one of the proudest days. And then like a month, the, you know, the week later, they shut everything down and hotel things came to a halt. So it has been rough. What we're seeing with other clients across the country is that because hotel properties can be purchased at a discount, there's a discouragement to actually building unless there's some sort of specific need tied to some specific area. And there's certainly been a slowdown on finance. Now, with regard to requirements, yeah, the, the housing stuff wasn't a requirement. And we, we put in, I think we put loose language about housing here because we heard from the council that you weren't overly anxious for too much housing. But I, I think that that the housing component is something that can certainly be discussed.
Thank you for that.
We're going to go move on to council member Patterson and then we'll move on to councilwoman, Mayor Ploton Valentine. Councilmember Patterson and then Valentine, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question to follow to Elizabeth. Could you guys provide a specific recommendation of the language that you would like to see added to the specific plan along with rationale as to why that specific language? To understand you guys want the, the language to be kind of expanded. You know, to include more uses. My understanding is by having that in place, it'll be easier for you guys to court some end users for projects. So you guys can, you know, provide something, Rodney said, hey, we would like you guys to admit it in this fashion. And these are the reasons why we want these specific amendments. But also with that said, I, I think it'd be a great idea to do kind of a ad hoc committee to have some ongoing continuing, continuing conversations. And it sounds like a big idea to do that with Mr. Beck, with our planning director. And I would love to also volunteer to be a part of that.
Okay. Council, is there a response you expect, would like to hear, Mr. Patterson, council member? Or just, it was just a statement?
If you guys can confirm that you understand my request, that's fine.
Yes, yes, sir, we understand the request. That's exactly the sort of thing that we're thinking would come out of this ad hoc committee, right? That it's not like we're going to write that language and put it on you, right? It's like we're going to talk together about here's directionality. Then how do we make that language work for it? So I think that those things are going to happen at that level. If that helps, sir.
Mayor Ploton, Valentine, go ahead.
Yes, you, you gave us some proposals early on when we first were meeting about what, what was possible. And I'm just wondering, what is it that you want to do that you can't do with the current downtown specific plan and the current zoning? Of the proposals you gave us, which of those are you unable to do because of the current zoning, the current downtown specific plan and the general plan? What, what, what is it you can't do?
Well, let me start and then let Elizabeth finish this. So first off, we heard, so, so like the proposal we gave at the last meeting, I think, because we were asked for like, well, what was the latest proposal that was in there and bring it up? And that was for the 1,800 units and we did not get a lot of love for it. And we heard that. So we didn't go back and say, oh, we're going to come back with you and bug you again with that. We heard not to do that. So we're not here saying that we want to impose a plan upon the city. We understand this is a core piece of the city. We're working together on it. So I don't think we're here with a, with, with a plan saying, oh, it doesn't match in this way. I think we see it a little differently, that we want to work through, we want to work with you guys, develop that plan and then take out the area of, of, of difficulty as we move through it. And and I want Elizabeth to talk to you about it in detail. But I think the main issue is if you look at the current plan, it was really designed around this sort of, this thing that was cutting edge in 2016, which is, you know, you sort of ground floor retail with a, a unit stocked up above it. And it was really geared heavily towards retail in a way that we wouldn't or we couldn't right now do it. And it was geared towards offices, traditional offices. So that, that plays out not just in the zoning, but also like in the design standards, right? But it's designed for a certain thing. And I think we need to, to work on that. So I, I would turn it to Elizabeth. I think she has a more nuanced and detailed view.
Okay, Ms. Elizabeth?
Hi there. I'm sorry, and I might just lost my, like, I missed a little bit of what Paul said. But yes, I mean, I think, I think just to pick up on again, you know, as I, as I mentioned, you know, the, the, the world has changed. The way that even retail is provided is, is, is different now. And, you know, there are certain types of research and development, types of uses and things like that. You know, some of the, some of the digital streaming types of uses and things like that. They, they don't fit neatly into, into retail or office. And what you have in your, in your code is, is even more sort of limited than I think some of the concepts that are discussed in the specific plan. But the code is what controls here. So we've got to be able to fit it into, you know, financial services or retail. And because of the sort of narrow definitions there, I think the concern is that there may be aspects of proposed uses that do not fit within those. And particularly the way that some of these, you know, new kinds of, you know, aerospace or tech-related companies conduct their operations. You know, they might have, you know, a little bit of onsite assembly or something like that, that, that is sometimes even interactive with the public. I mean, there's just all kinds of things that are new and that are happening. And if a user looks at the code and says, I'm concerned that it's not clear enough that I will be able to do all of my uses, you know, under this existing code, they're not going to be comfortable. And so I think that's really one of the things that we want to focus on. You know, is, is looking at the zoning code specifically, not even the, the discussion about the goals and the policies in the specific plan, but the actual zoning code, the, the specific uses that are, that are included there.
To the chair, this is Montero.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. And again, thank you for the Charles Company and the staff for joining us this morning. I'm glad to hear that the Charles Company is ready to move forward with the, with the specific plan that maybe we can, you know, can be compromised between the city of Hawthorne and the Charles Company. My question to Ms. Elizabeth Camacho, do you also understand that while we're talking about zoning and, and the, and our laws and, and the specific plan, that we have a condition use permit? That you could apply for any project that you guys wanted to build on that mall? It would have gone through the planning department and then to the planning commission. And you could obtain, we call the CUP anytime that you desire. So can you speak about that, please?
Sure, council member. So the conditional use permit is intended to kind of put a finer point on the requirements and conditions for a specific project, right? So if you have a use that you are proposing or a project, a conditional use permit will not be able to get you out of the limitations of the permitted uses in the zoning code. So, so, you know, the, the conditional use permit will provide process to review a specific project and the conditions that, upon which that use is permitted. But if the use itself is not listed in the permitted uses in the zoning code, the conditional use permit cannot be used to override the zoning code list of permitted uses. So, and, and again, the way that zoning codes work and the way that Hawthorne's code works, of course, is that if a use is not specifically authorized, if it's not included in the list of things that can be done, it's not permitted. And there are gray areas for sure. And there's definitely room for interpretation. But I think that one of the things that is of concern is that an end user is not going to want to rely on a gray area. They're going to want to see what exactly, you know, is permitted? How, what does that include? What kinds of things might it include? And if it's focused on only a limited set of uses and a very traditional set of uses, then their, their use may not be fully authorized. And if it's not authorized, they cannot use the conditional use permit to override that. So that's really our concern. And that's kind of one of the, you know, the primary points that we wanted to stress today is that this is, you know, an issue that is at the very heart of the zoning code and the specific plan, the permitted uses that needs to be addressed in order to allow us then to do, you know, whatever other entitlements might be necessary for a project. But we have to start at the, at the very heart of it in the, in the actual zoning code. To your question?
I'm, I'm not finished, please. This is Alex Montero, I'm not finished yet. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, like I said, you know, it's good that you guys are willing to, to work with us. And, and I understand that maybe because now it's 2021, we can talk about, you know, how we could modify our, our coding zone and the specific plan for us to come up with a viable project that we can all agree upon. But let me go back a little bit because on 2015, 16, when you guys submit that plan that, that we, that the city council at that time agree and signed the MOU, that you guys were going to build 600 unit housing that was approved and some other, you know, commercial. And you did accept that specific plan that time and also, you know, and, and everything was going through, I believe was through the CUP. But I understand that times have changed. So just tell me, what's the difference from 2016 and now from, on your perspective about the commercial and the residential? Because like you said, we, we, we will never approve 1,900 units. Because we know that right now, the downtown specific plan calls for 24 unit per an acre, right? So, so I, I want to figure it out that when we go to that ad hoc meeting, that to change our zoning and our laws just for, to, to, for the mall, you guys are not going to run away like you did in 2016. I'm done, Mr. Mayor. If that anybody, and anybody can answer that question for me, I'll appreciate it. From the Charles Company.
All right. I mean, do we have a response? Because I'd like to make a couple of comments. I haven't asked anything or said anything. Okay. So I guess, go ahead, Mr. Sarah. I'll be next. Go ahead.
Just to address council member Montero and thank you for, you know, you make some very good points. Unfortunately, the world has changed. And so now we need to change. And that's why timing here is so critical. Because we want to make sure that when we go out and start, you know, marketing the site, that whoever comes in has a roadmap. And that's what the, these tools and this, these codes, they are the roadmap to be able to, you know, give some level of, of direction to whomever is going to come here that, you know, there's going to be a beginning and an end. And so that's why updating it, it needs to be a living, breathing document. And that's what you're going to have here. And that's, you know, usually what the law is. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mayor, I'm done. Mr. Mayor? Okay, Beck, I think you can go back since Mr. Mayor is not available. Can you hear me back?
I'm getting here a focus on the entitlements, which to me indicates that you just want the entitlements, maybe just to sell. And so I need some confirmation with respect to that. And that's kind of concerning because we asked you guys for a development.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you, can you start all over again? Because you were, we didn't hear you from the beginning.
You didn't? Okay.
No.
All right.
Thank you.
No, thank, thank you, that's important. So I'm concerned because I hear the focus is on entitlement, entitlement, entitlement. And that's what I'm hearing about, specific plans, et cetera. But the focus of us even contracting Mr. Beck also, which I have questions for you, sir, is that we were expecting a plan on a spread on what we would see at that mall site, what they, what they intend to do. And then, once we have that in hand, then we can consider, I would say, a change to the specific plan. A change to meet with the focus. If we all agree at the city council, we can work towards that. But, you know, this kind of leads me to that, that you just want the entitlement to sell it. So I need to, I need to hear from you guys, what's your intention, real, true intention? But also, if there's a buyer, they don't have to work off of your entitlement and your roadmap. If they have a, if they have a vision, they could just buy it from you guys, which that's your true intention to sell. Then they could buy it and they could worry about the EIR if they have to do another one. They could worry about, you know, all the development fees and the specific plan on their own. So I'm kind of confused. I don't feel I'm getting what we asked for and what we really need here.
Mr. Mayor?
Charles Company, yeah, I mean, come on.
I'm sorry.
With regards to an ad hoc committee, I, as a council member, would like to be part of that ad hoc committee. But in order to avoid that, I think all my council colleagues should be privy to those discussions on zone changes, et cetera. So I don't, I don't think there should be an ad hoc committee. And with all respect to my council member colleagues, maybe their intention is to expedite the process, no other reason. But that is so critical. And, you know, with, I do have a lot of historical background that goes back 10 years on the whole thing. Observers like council member Montero have seen this stuff as they go and every single one of us. So I think we can all contribute to that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Beck speaking and I apologize, I had had my hand up for a while via the, the feature on, on Zoom. So I think things may have, it's okay. I think things may have gotten a little farther down the path with my hand up and I probably should have jumped in. But out of respect to the elected officials.
And please address all the points that I made, two or three points.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to do that and thank you for the, the opportunity to do so. I think the overall goal wasn't to only simply focus on the specific plan. I realize that the Charles Company is, in, in their, their, their group is, is discussing that. It's more on a concurrent path process. And that is really critical to understand that it's a concurrent path. And what I mean by that is it's a chicken or the egg scenario for these users, whether it's in the content area, studio area, flex creative space area, as we've discussed in the past, which there is a mass demand for that. You've got to sort of move on concurrent paths. Users don't look at things such as Users don't look at things such as the nuances of what we're discussing today. They want to know, if I come there, am I going to be able to operate my business? And the reality of it is, they need to know that, but in the same token, they won't know that unless there is a united sort of front on that. I know we discussed that in the past and in sort of some other municipalities and the successes they've had in attracting these groups of of large users. And in in higher and better uses, it was a united front. I'm not saying we're not that way, but the concept was not to push a specific plan. And correct me if I'm wrong, Charles Company and your representatives, it was a concurrent path theory or concurrent path model. Where we're working together with the uses that would be acceptable to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor. But also in the same token, knowing that that is something that will need to be modified in conjunction with those users that are acceptable. Or that project that is acceptable to your group and the in in the council. So that we're not losing time, but rather moving concurrently. So just want to clarify that. As it relates to your other specific questions, I can't speak on behalf of the Charles Company because I'm I I've been retained on behalf of the city. But I will say the spirits of the conversations and the meetings that we had last week. That was, that was the goal, that was the the concept, that was what we had discussed. It's that chicken or the egg scenario, again, not to beat a dead horse, but to further elaborate or further cement. Is to move on those concurrent paths so that that the constituents and the council and mayor, you guys are satisfied as it relates to the project. And there's nothing being held back as relates to specific plan.
Okay. Well, I liked, I like, I would like the Charles Company to answer my question. Is your purpose, your focus on entitlements for the purpose of selling this property?
The purpose of the entitlement is to redevelop the site, whether it be or we sell it. If we have an end user, we're open to either option. But if we do not have a roadmap, like Chris indicated, he's correct. The the whoever it is is not going to come in here. They want to know when they're going to be able to look their business.
Okay, but at the same time.
Would take and also delays the process to having to wait till you have an end user. We would like to simultaneously be able to do both. I mean, there's, it is a roadmap that we can simultaneously do. Both tracks without having an issue.
So what so what I'm hearing is that your focus is on selling the mall with entitlements, or am I wrong?
Focus is on redevelopment or selling the mall. Either or. If we get a tenant that we can build for, we would love to do that. If we have an opportunity to sell at the, you know, we would do that as well. But we need a roadmap regardless of whatever we do today and anyone that comes in, they need a roadmap and they need a document.
Uh, Councilwoman Valentine, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Uh, yes, you, so I was a little concerned because when I asked you if. What I what I I intended to ask you was, had you begun marketing the site? And then I think you said you had not begun marketing the site. But my question was if, what was it that you wanted to do? Based on the projects you had given us before that you were not able to do because of the lack of entitlements your potential users had. Or did not have. And I think I got my question answered. It seems like you have not even begun marketing the site. To anyone. Am I correct?
We have, this is, you know, obviously, this is an end user site. And so it is a very appealing site, you know, we. I cannot say that we don't have interest because there's always interest. It's it's just making sure that it's the, it it's the right, it's the right deal for the site and for our company. So when we start looking, as you indicated and you suggested. Which is a great idea to do some type of mixed use with like R and D or some type of. Like the options that we discussed last time. We cannot do any of those options here. At this moment, because we don't have the codes and the zoning in place to be able. To even entertain those types of uses. And that's what we would like to do. We would like to have a more broadway, broad-based. Net that so that we can go after those big users that that everybody here, I think, was in agreement in the last meeting. That that's something that we would all like to see.
So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that it sounds like we're at the very beginning. Because if we change all of the zoning and the entitlements. You don't know that you're going to get anyone to respond who would be interested in purchasing the site. Or 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 developing on the site at this point, am I right?
We do have an idea of who we could go after, yes. We have interest by various companies. That's something that we can have more formal conversations if we know that that's the direction where it's headed. But once again, without having the land use in place, those conversations are that they're, they can't be had.
Did they tell you that or did did you surmise this on your own?
No, we we have very. When we discuss this and we come before you and start spending a lot of money on on, you know, on attorneys. And looking at land use, et cetera, is because these leads, they're very good. They're, you know, they're good leads. So we need to be able to have that in place so that we can have more serious conversation.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, let me take down my little hand. Going back to Mrs. Camacho real quick. Ms. Camacho, you made a mention that users will check the code. I'm curious, when you said that, what types of users would inquire on? Potentially at the site with these these modifications, these changes that you're suggesting?
Well, I don't know that I was specifically referring to a type of user, but I think that, you know, with a site like this, that is, you know, so large. And in need of so much redevelopment and investment, whoever is going to be interested in in pursuing or exploring an opportunity. Is absolutely going to look at what the permitted uses are at a high level. And they're going to see that, you know, this is a relatively narrow range of traditional sort of, you know, retail office types of uses. And if if their company, if they are, you know, a streaming company or some some of the, you know, the newer technologies that we're seeing these days. They're going to say, look, we're not a traditional company. We don't fit within this and 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 that's what they're going to see right away. And that was sort of the point that I made. Does that respond to your question?
Yeah, I was just curious what type of other, besides the list that we saw, what type of other interests would come? If those changes were made, like what, you you mentioned tech company, but can you list or can you name what other potentials for the location?
Sarah, do you want to respond to that? I haven't been involved in any of the discussions myself, but, you know, again, just at a general level.
Well, it it's very possible. If you look at our presentation on slide number three. Where it does indicate, and I'm sure you're going to get a copy, you know, of the presentation so that you can look over. But, you know, what we discussed and it was something that the council was actually amicable to, like research and development, aerospace, flex uses. Digital streaming, e-commerce, studio, other commercially viable solutions. Neighborhood commercial, potential, you know, housing, et cetera. So all those, all all those uses are very, they're, they're very possible here. And like Elizabeth mentioned, if we don't have these, you know, we don't even have the process started to be able to have. The land use in place, they're going to look this and they're going to say, don't waste our time. When this is done, let us know and we'll come back. So in order to have those more, you know, formal conversations. We need to be able to at least, you know, get started.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is. Mr. Mr. Beck and I didn't want to jump the line, but I did want to jump in if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I think reestablishing what the use and the 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 focused use on what the council and you, Mr. Mayor, would like. Would be the most imperative first step. Look, to redo the specific plan and all that takes time and a lot of multitude of various things and the reasons that you mentioned in your questioning. I think establishing what that use would look like from your guy's standpoint, the electeds and and you, Mr. Mayor. Will enable to move on concurrent paths. I think we've all seen the movie or heard of the movie Field of Dreams, Build It and They Will Come. In this sort of context, it's, again, I hate to go back with the chicken or the egg. I I work with users all day long. And the first question they always ask is, am I going to be welcomed? And what sort of hoops and hurdles? I just want to do what I do, whether it's make content or, you know, research and develop, whatever the case may be. Knowing that that's been established by the council and you, Mr. Mayor, and working towards what. The Charles Company is proposing will enable us, or them, I should say, to start speaking to those users right away. By saying, look, we've got an established path, the specific plan is being worked on, but this is what the council and the mayor have given direction for. So that we're able to move on those concurrent paths, those users can start to come while working on that. I realize that's very ideological, but I think it's very realistic. And in 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 a case like this, where you've got a twenty twenty five acre site. Not really knowing from the user standpoint, what's up, what's down, I think would speak volumes. If you guys were willing to move on those concurrent paths. It's it's something that I find all the time in these sort of development projects that I do all over the city. We can get there, but the users ultimately have to be comfortable that when they come there, that they're going to be not only welcomed in welcome arms. But they're going to be able to do what they need to do. And again, going back to establishing what the overall goal and and objectives are for the site. Whether it's, hey, look, we want some some flex or creative with some retail and some green space and a little housing, whatever that directive is. And then enabling to move forward, you know, on the logistical piece of it with the specific plan, but we're not losing any time. By going in 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 facilitating those groups coming to the site.
One other thing that I wanted to mention, no, yes, thank you, Mr. Beck, is that my concern is that. I don't know if railroading is the word, but maybe it is. I don't want to railroad ourselves into a specific plan. That will exclude any possible plans that might be outside of what like we might have thought. Maybe there's some genius idea out there that is superior to anything that. Did you guys, did you lose me or did you?
We lost you for a minute.
Okay. What I, oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, there's a call coming in on my thing. I don't want to, I don't want to railroad ourselves into a specific plan. That other, like developers will see and say, oh, wait, that doesn't kind of fit. So it's already restricting the restricting the possibilities by having a specific plan. And there might be a plan that is superior to anything that we could have come up with as a council or a spread of uses. That, you know, really could be like something outstanding for, I mean, I heard that somebody was interested in putting a sports center. With supporting commercials, sport merchandise establishments there. Okay, so if we would have gone with the specific plan. That we've been talking like recently, like kind of something that would mimic what we've been asking for, that would have been excluded. And that great idea might have, might have gone away because they didn't like the way we had like zoned this thing. I mean, Mr. Beck, you can respond or any.
Sure. I mean, I think in that concept, Mr. Mayor, and 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 appreciate it, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but I think in that particular concept. That's where Councilmember Montero's point was, if potentially a conditional use permit could come up for that sort of thing. Again, I I'm not here to to say, hey, let's do the specific plan. I guess my position on it is that concurrent paths, but really establishing what the council and you, Mr. Mayor, want. As sort of a beacon or sort of guidance. So that the plan can be modified if needed, but there's some guidance for the owner to move. And and start proceeding and 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 doing and in in going out to the market and finding those groups and saying, hey, look. The council and the mayor have said, these are things that they would accept. We're working on a modification of the plan, but this is in fact some concepts of that. Of what they would 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 accept. What are your thoughts on it? And that would then give those end users, including the entity that you just referenced. Some level of comfort that, hey, look, we've got, we've got a council and a mayor working with a private holder, working together, they're updating the plan. But in the same token, we've got a warm and fuzzy, for lack of a better term, that this would be an acceptable use. And I hopeful that answers your question.
And I and I think I'd like to discuss all those possibilities and that further in our session with you.
To the chair.
Between council members and you. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, like we said, we always wanted to bring these meetings together for all of us to work in a solution, right? So that's, I I I agree that we should have more study session and we can do it, you know. If every every week, if we would like to. To begin to 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 listen what Charles Company wants to propose to amend our zoning and the specific plan. And then we'll go from there, talking to our own staff and you, Mr. Beck, and and the planning department. To see if in fact what they're proposing is 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 okay for for our own community. If it's something that it's vital for us, maybe we'll talk about it. So I do agree with Mr. Mayor that I don't want ad hoc meeting. I don't want to council only to be the site on those zoning changing. And 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 amend the specific plan for the mall. So I want us to have, continue to have this study session with all of us together. And 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 get also the planning department more involved in this discussion, our 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 director of planning. For us to begin, for us to begin to talk about. If Charles Company, like Mr. David Patterson mentioned, send us a draft of what they envision for the zoning changing. And 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 amend of the specific plan, so for us to react or to respond a positive or a negative way. So we need to see that and by by the meantime, you know, we'll be working with our staff and Mr. Beck to come up with some ideas. Of how we could modify that specific plan. And also maybe changing the zones a little bit because like I said, yes, the the downtown specific plan is almost a ten year document. So it needs to be revised. I agree completely on that. And and then we need to look in our zone. If that zoning or whatever, whatever business or whatever users is going to use that plan. Is going to benefit the city of Hawthorne and his community surround that mall. So that is where we're going to go from here because I think it is very good productive conversation. And I and and I like the idea that Sarah mentioned. If they can build and develop that mall based on the new, maybe potential zoning or modification of our specific plan. Then we'll, you know, I would like to see that mall developed. And even sell to another user that is going to develop that mall in a in a very short term. Because I don't want us to go back, you know, fi- another five year, ten year, that mall still sitting in there.
Okay, so.
Folks that are not speaking, put themselves on mute, please. There's a lot of background noise and making it difficult.
We need to, after these last comments, are we ready to set up a meeting date with Mr. Beck, folks?
I have another question. My hand is up.
Yeah, no, but after these set of questions, let's try to set up a meeting with Mr. Beck. But go ahead. Who was first? I mean, I just want to make sure I go in the right order. Okay, and Patterson and then English, did you want to say anything, Miss English, Councilwoman?
It was just difficult to hear all of. Councilmember Montero's words. I was having a hard time listening.
Uh, Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yes, so so I'm concerned that the Charles Company hasn't presented any potential users to us. That they have investigated and that they have. That and that have rejected. Developing at the mall because of the limitations in our zoning or in our specific plan. So I'm concerned about that. So I would like to see if we're going to be investigating changes to entitlements. I would like to see what they are proposing, who possibly can come in. Who do they have in the pipeline that's ready to come in if we do these changes? I don't want us to do the changes and have. I don't want us to do the changes and have at the end of the, at the end of the. The, 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 the project, the end of making the changes and there's nobody ready to come in. So I'd like to know who is ready, who's in the pipeline, who's waiting for us to make these changes so that they can present their proposals.
And on top of that, the reality has been that we've heard of three or four different people who groups who have shown interest. And they go away. So and they don't, they don't follow through. So my concern is exactly what Mayor Protem and some of my other council member colleagues have mentioned is that. They won't, we're going to be stuck with the specific plan that, you know, it's money involved in time and money, etc. Okay, Charles Company, Charles Company.
I would love to answer that question and thank you, Mayor Protem and Mayor Vargas. You know, a few years ago, we actually brought a potential tenant that we had Open Espro with. And I'll be very candid. We had a conversation with your former city manager and city attorney and. It was not very positive and they went away. They were very concerned about the time. That it would take to be able to. To gain their entitlements to be able to move forward. And part of it was. Because, you know, they were very inflexible. And, you know, that's past history. Today's a new day and today we have a new world. We do hear you. We hear Mayor Vargas when you indicated that you don't want to be pigeonholed. And to certain uses, we agree. You can make, that's the beauty of the specific plan. Is that you can make it as broad based as you want. So that there are no limitations, so that when we do have. New tenants that come to the forefront. And that are viable, that they're able to look at the land use and be able to fit into the box. And the other thing also is that obviously we would like to, as we formalize. You know, a transaction, that's something that we may come forward, but obviously. You know, we have always been, put the cards on the table and been very forthcoming. You know, there is a lot of competition. We're concerned about confidentiality and people getting in the middle of our deals. So because it's happened before. And so we know that today is a new day. We are thrilled. With, with the way that the council is moving right now, the direction, the people that we're working with. We were very hopeful that this will be the group that will bring the redevelopment of the House or Mall for fruition.
Councilmember Patterson, was that good? Or do you still need to ask something further?
I still have some to say. So, um, I think, you know, what Sarah said, it makes perfect sense. That we do update our specific plan regardless of who owns the mall. Whereas if we're in this conversation or not, it's to the city's benefit to have a legislative standpoint, from a code standpoint. Support development, right? You know, the way that our zoning reads, the way our code reads. Is what attracts business to the city. Whereas we're having this conversation with Charles Company or not. So I think it's a great idea for the city, period, to update our, our specific plan. And funny enough, you know, one of the people I ran for for council last year is one thing that she, that she campaigned on, which is a true statement. We need to update the specific plan. That's what's going to attract buyers, that's what's going to attract users. And it doesn't, the specific plan that it reads now hurts us. It it's, it precludes any use that's not expressly stated on there already. So if somebody's doesn't. Clearly fit into that use, they won't even come and try to have a conversation with us. So it does need to be updated, it does need to make, it doesn't become a. A, a, a breathing document that can be changed and updated. But specifically in this case, opened up to allow for more indifferent and more creative uses. So. I don't know if we need to be the emotion or just a recommendation, but I would like to move forward with a concurrent plan. Of course, we asked Charles Company to come with some specific type of development they want to see, but at the same time, we do need to move forward with. Adjusting our specific plan to welcome business, welcome development. And I think that we, and I think it's what you're alluding to earlier as far as setting a meeting with Mr. Beck, want to make sure that that meeting with Mr. Beck. Is a closed session meeting with the council and our, our staff, so we can really go up and discuss what we really want. And task Mr. Beck to chair that with the Charles Company. As far as a. Ad hoc committee, purpose of an ad hoc committee isn't to make a decision on behalf of the council, but to be able to have. Expedient back and forth conversations that can be reported to the council. So we don't have to get everybody together two and three times a week to have these conversations.
Okay. Well, I have time, however many meetings you need to have, I can do that. But no, your points are well taken. Councilmember Patterson, I think we all agree that we were expecting a plan from the Charles Company. And at the same time, they're, they want to talk about entitlements. Let's go ahead and talk about that. So I think that's, that's already up in the air. So I, I agree and we, we, we are reiterating that. I reiterate that along with you. So, Councilmember colleagues, are we ready to set up a meeting with Mr. Beck so that we can have an intimate conversation with him?
Mr. Mayor, okay, we can schedule that, but also we need to schedule a meeting with the Charles Company because I want us to. Continue this dialogue, especially when it comes, because I want to see if they can bring the next time. A draft, what they, what they expect, maybe zoning changing or the downtown specific plan. So then we would have maybe a two sets of work that from our staff. From the city of Houghton and Charles Company, so then we can compare our apple to apple or orange to apples or something like that. To come up with a resolution, what, what is the next step? Because I do like the, the timetable that. Mrs. Camacho presented. So I want this us to keep going because like you said, the goal is to develop that mall. And might have developed that mall with something that is going to be good for the city of Houghton, for the, for our residents and for the. Charles Company or somebody or some, some other users. So, so let's, let's. Set up a meeting with Charles Company since we have everybody now here. And then we'll have another one with our Christopher Beck and our staff, okay?
That's what we're saying, right? We're gonna, we need to schedule a meeting. Everything, it sounds very positive, so very pleased with the conversations we have. There's arguments for, counter arguments, compromising talk here, a talk that shows compromise. And so, so we can set up the meeting with them and establish the meeting date for Mr. Beck, with Mr. Beck. Go ahead.
To the chair, can I ask the Charles Company if if they would, maybe in three weeks, they will have a draft of something for this, for. About to amend the downtown specific plan and the zoning?
You don't need that much time.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking, so they can tell me yes or no.
Member, I'll let our attorney take a look at that because it is a tight. A tight timeline, but I just wanted to make one comment. That I encourage anyone, but please, if you have any questions or comments, I'm always in it. My phone is on 347. I'm available vaccinated. I can speak with you, talk on the phone, whatever you, you need. So, but with that, I will turn it over to Elizabeth and Paul. And if you could please, maybe give us your comments. I know three weeks is very tight.
Okay, so let's establish a date. We need to establish a date because that's the next step here. Throw us a, give us a, give us a potential time on your end, Ms. Withers.
We, we would like to meet with your planning staff. Because obviously, planning and even your legal counsel, because that's the nitty gritty and it's going to be the, you know. The code and how we update everything. I think that's something that we would encourage to have a meeting sooner than later. That would be very productive for us.
Well, any, any discussions that take place, Mr. Beck needs to be in those conversations.
That's fantastic. And I assume that.
But either way, I think we like, we would like to set up a date to kind of give you some of our expectations or hear from you guys. What date do you have suggested?
Paul, Elizabeth.
Well, hearing all of this stuff, I was, I thinking in my mind how long we wanted. I was thinking six to eight weeks and then I heard three weeks. So I think this, I think we need to have a preliminary meeting with, with your staff team and Mr. Beck, you know, whoever the team that you guys put together for that. I think that's probably a couple of weeks out. I mean, I'd like to say that we could do it as quick as four weeks, but it might drag a little on that. I mean, I would say four to six.
Well, we can have a meeting with staff and put together a timeline. So that way, you know, the city team and our team, we can come up with what's realistic. You know, we want a good document and I know you would be able to do it in the time allotted, but we want to give you enough time.
Well, we would like to meet also, so establish that time where they want to meet with staff, etc., but we would like to meet with Mr. Beck before that meeting takes place.
Great.
I, I would agree and I will make, just to take.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember. What do you?
Yeah, just to remind the Charles Company and also us. That we have a tentative agreement that was 90 days. Remember that?
That's why we want to accelerate this process.
Exactly. So, so, but if we're talking about six, four to six weeks, it it's going to put us on, oh, beyond the 90 days.
So what do you, so then whatever they need to do to give this to us in 30, in, in three weeks.
Well, I, I, I'll, you know, so.
Well, I think the. Yeah, if we did roughly four weeks, doesn't that hold us to the 90 day? But you're, you're absolutely right, Councilmember. So that might be a reasonable thing to to go with the four weeks. I do think that we're biting into a large thing. We've had turnover and obviously with city attorneys and stuff, I think it's going to take time to get this worked out. We're giving you an aggressive schedule to get it done this year. But you know, that's all of us rowing in the same direction. But do you want to, maybe we should set a, the next council meeting in four weeks and. In, in between that time, you guys will do your follow up with Mr. Beck and we'll do our own separate follow up with Mr. Beck.
I just wanted to establish, I just wanted to establish to the group to take me out of the equation. I will make myself available. Whenever you need me to, and that goes to both sides to help, you know, any ambiguities. And then I would also concur with, I believe it was the mayor, Mr. Mayor. In regards to our internal meeting with the council, myself, prior to. Charles Company meeting with staff so that there is a clear sort of. Established path forward, so that that working session with staff and Charles Company is one that is extremely productive, so that the. Narrative and the goals in the, in the path forward is established with our meeting and I can provide the proper guidance.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Beck, so, or, or city council, what are we working towards? When do, are we expecting the presentation?
May 12. I go, I said, May 12.
Is that a council meeting date or is it a special day?
That's not, that's a Wednesday. Even I can go, I can go even to the 19 if they would like.
Let's, let's aim for the 12.
May 19. That's the two days I proposed for the Charles Company.
What do you, what do you guys?
May 12, I'm not available.
Okay, so can we go to 19?
I, I want to give them opportunity, so I'm good with May 19th.
What time do we say?
Can we do 11 o'clock, May 19, for the Charles Company and us?
That's fine.
That sounds, that sounds good. And is that a Wednesday or is that a Monday? Excuse me.
That's a Wednesday, Wednesday.
That sounds, that sounds better for me. Okay.
It works for me.
And then can we, would we like to set up a date with Mr. Beck?
Can we have anything tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Don't we have, don't we have some?
Special meeting. Well, we'd have to have at least two dates or.
This will need 24 hours.
I, I apologize. I'm getting vaccinated tomorrow for the first round, so I just want to let the group know. I may not be my normal state. If I could get 40, you know. I should have probably prepped that.
Thursday, guys?
We'll probably run to Friday then. Thursday, Friday.
Friday would work great for me.
Is Thursday not too good for you, Mr. Beck?
Thursday's fine. Yeah. My first vaccine, but I think I'll be okay. I mean, I think if I've got 48 hours, I should be fine.
City council, Thursday at 11?
11 is, 11 is difficult for me.
So what time?
I get my second vaccine at 10.
Councilwoman Reagan, what do you think?
All of our meetings have been happening at 11, but I have difficulties, you know. Because I'm trying to work in LA also, so.
Well, me too. I know, I know exactly what you're saying. So what time then, Councilwoman?
About three o'clock or something.
I prefer later. Yeah. I'd prefer later so that I could leave and go back to Houghton.
Three o'clock, at three o'clock on Thursday, this Thursday. That's good because it's, it's not my workday for my night classes. Okay.
Thursday at three will work great.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the staff, Vaughn, Vaughn, you there, right? So we need to. I need, I need to have Vaughn and the planning department and and potentially the entrance attorney. I want all of them in this meeting with us.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes. All right. So we have a meeting with.
One last thing, I apologize for interrupting. One last thing, Charles Company. If you want to reach out offline to meet with me separately, again, I will make myself available post Thursday meeting. So just let me know. Again, just want to make it established to the group that, that I have authorization to do that.
We will. I do want to make a, just a brief closing comment. I want to keep our, you know, moving forward to working with your interim city manager, your planning. Your interim city attorney and the rest of the team. Very excited. We'll go ahead and reach out to Chris right away. So you set up the time and then we'll work together. So thank you everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ms. Withers. Okay, so we have two meeting dates set and the meeting between Charles Company staff and Mr. Beck is going to be sandwiched in between there. Okay? Thank you so much, City Council. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Meeting's now returned.